Okay, we're going to get started with tonight's presentation. I just want to welcome everyone to the Design Public Hearing for Transform 66 Inside the Beltway. My name is Amanda Baxter. I'm VDOT's Project Manager. And before we get started, I just want to recognize a few people that are joining us tonight. This evening, we have Chairman Boliva from Fairfax County Board of Supervisor. And also joining us tonight, we have a representative for Supervisors Kathy Smith from the Sully District. And also with us from the Northern Virginia District, we have Helen Cuervo, our District Administrator. Renee Hamilton, our Deputy District Administrator. We have Susan Shaw, our Mega Projects Director. Todd Horsley with the Department of Rail and Public Transportation. And Nick Nicholson with the I-66 Project Team. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to carry forward the project we've been coming out to the public about for Transform 66 Inside the Beltway. Tonight, you'll learn about how the tolling system will operate, as well as the infrastructure that we're going to build to implement this project. The format for tonight's hearing is that if you've signed up to speak, I will call your name up to the microphone. You will have a chance to make a public comment. It will not be a dialogue back and forth, but it will give you a chance to publicly comment so the room can hear your comment. You can also provide a written comment and drop it in the box in the back. We have the court reporter here tonight. And then, as we do for the entire Transform 66 project, we have the ability to receive an email, as well as going to our website and through the Discuss. And you can also mail your written comments to the address on the pamphlet that you picked up at the door. So with that, I'll get started. So this is a familiar project map that you've seen. This project map represents the study area that encompasses the Inside the Beltway project. And our attempt with this project was to not only understand traffic moving along 66 inside the Beltway, but in addition, the shaded areas you see here, and you'll see later in the presentation, we've looked at areas that extend beyond I-66, since we have parallel routes that also carry traffic through this corridor. So the success of this project is solely measured by our ability to move more people through the corridor. And really, how we do that is providing additional travel choices throughout the corridor. As you know now, we currently operate in HOV-restricted interstate during peak hours in the peak directions, that's eastbound in the morning and westbound in the PM. And that's a two-and-a-half-hour HOV-two-only period. With this project, we would then open up that period to single occupancy vehicles that choose to use the corridor and can pay the dynamic toll. In addition, the toll revenue will be used to fund multimodal projects to enhance that travel choice through the corridor, as well as connect an express lane system to our regional express lane network that we currently have in place along 495 and 95, and what we have proposed as part of the I-66 Outside the Beltway project, as well as what the department's proposing for the northern extension of the 395 express lanes. Since we've met with the public last, there's been some key approvals, decisions made on the project, and I want to just walk you through what those were. In October, this project, along with 66 Outside the Beltway, was adopted into the Regional Transportation Plan in this region. And really, what that means is when we talk to you a lot about the traffic modeling and how we consider impacts in the area, these projects have to be built into a regional plan. So this project was formally adopted into that -- it was formally adopted into that plan. Then, in December, early December, the Northern Virginia Transportation Commission accepted the responsibility through resolution to administer the net toll revenues collected through that system. And following that resolution, CTV approved to delegate that revenue to the Northern Virginia Transportation Commission. And lastly, and I'm going to touch upon this later in the presentation, you've heard recently about the compromise on the widening occurring sooner rather than later on this corridor. And we're going to talk a little bit about the third lane widening between the Dulles Connector Road and Exit 71 in Arlington. So again, the hours of operations. This project currently, from 6:30 in the morning to 9 o'clock in the morning, headed eastbound. HOV-two drivers are restricted to this corridor. This project would expand that to a four-hour period, which would be from 5:30 in the morning to 9:30 in the morning. Conversely, headed westbound in the PM, currently, it's HOV-two only from 4:00 to 6:30. This project would expand that from 3:00 to 7:00. At all other times, we will have a non-operational tolling facility. It will be available to the public as it is today outside of those hours. When we opened the project in the summer of 2017, those with HOV-two occupancy vehicles, they will have a free trip along the corridor. And then, the region will shift to an HOV-three requirement in 2020. And at that point, HOV-three would have a free trip along the corridor. And again, we'll talk about those multimodal improvements that will be applied during that time to help foster that slugging and carpooling and transit environment that we're looking to move more people through this corridor. Another thing that I wanted to say is through this corridor, you would have to have an EZ Pass or an EZ Pass Flex during those rush hour periods when we're tolling. That will really be the only way that we can identify you, rather than taking a picture of your license plate. Tonight, we have a representative from EZ Pass tonight, if you want to talk to them about that. But the EZ Pass transponder is just the normal transponder. The Flex transponder will give you the ability to nominate yourself in an HOV mode if you have the occupancy requirements for a free trip. This slide shows you the gantry locations that we have throughout the corridor. And these locations will track your trip and charge you one toll price for your final destination along the corridor. You'll also notice along the Dulles Connector Road that we have a green registration gantry, and that's really only over the eastbound direction of the corridor. And what that does is it helps us differentiate whether or not you're coming from the Dulles Corridor, or if you're coming from the Capitol Beltway or outside 66. Once you hit gantry two, that would be the only way to differentiate what direction you came from, in order for us to confirm your price -- your trip price for that -- your final destination. I wanted to emphasize that, like all of our systems we're building today, this is an all-electronic, which is why it's so important to have the EZ Pass or EZ Pass Flex in the corridor, but this is an all-electronic, no-toll booth scenario, all within our right-of-way that we're constructing. This layout shows you how we would enforce the corridor. And I wanted to draw your attention to two types of toll enforcement, HOV enforcement, as the two types of enforcement that we have in this corridor. The toll enforcement will be automated. So we'll have cameras mounted on the gantries. If you had an underfunded EZ Pass account, if you did not have an EZ Pass in your car, our cameras would then take a picture of your license plate, and then we would send you a toll violation notice through the mail for that. For the HOV enforcement, that would continue to be a manual enforcement. So if you had your car nominated in an HOV mode on your transponder, however, you only had one person in your car, you would see this enforcement bay where the state police would identify you by a flash on the gantry. As you go under that gantry, it will say what your nomination is. So if you're HOV-two nominated, it will flash. The State Patrol can look into your car. If you had one person, they would then enforce you for an HOV violation. So that's the same type of violation that anyone would get today if they were on the facility during our HOV-only hours. This slide shows you what our typical price sign layouts look like. So really, as you know, with a managed lane system, the traffic is going to be geared constantly during this period. And the toll prices will fluctuate higher when we have more congestion, and they will decrease when we have less congestion. We'll have electronic pricing signs, similar to what you see here in this example, that will show you the cost of your trip. And each approach will have a minimum of two pricing signs. So your last sign that you see before you get on 66 will be the price that you pay for your destination. I also wanted to highlight, which is unique about this corridor, other than the other express lanes we have in the area, that we have a non-operational display to make it crystal clear to those traveling the corridor in our non-toll hours that we are not tolling. So you'll actually see at the top here, where we have like the toll in yellow and the pricing, that's all a blank-out sign. It will turn off. And each sign will display a no-toll sign, so that people understand basically the rules of the game when we're not tolling. The example trip I wanted to point out to you is really to show you how the pricing signs work, because we're limited to three prices on our signs only. And we have four different destinations along the corridor. So really, what that means is if I was coming from 66 Outside the Beltway, headed to Washington, DC, I would see my first exit point, which would be Route 7. I would see my last destination. And here, for this example, we have Fairfax Drive. That's a middle destination. You also can get off at West Moreland 29, Washington Boulevard. That price would be somewhere in between the price displayed for the Route 7 and the Fairfax Drive trip. And that is how we also display those prices. It's the same regulations that limit our amount of information that we can keep on our signage throughout the corridor. Another thing that we did as part of this study, and it really gets back to the project map I showed you earlier, is looking at how traffic moves through this area along 66 and around 66. And the purpose of this was to determine if people were going to divers immensely due to the tolling and understanding the traffic patterns. And what you experience, unlike a lot of our other capacity projects that we do here at the department, what you experience during a managed lane facility is more a redistribution of that traffic. So where we have, you know, a very high volume getting on the system before the restriction and then dropping off the system because of the restriction, we look to really smooth out that curve, that traffic curve, and redistribute the traffic, as well as give people the flexibility to use the corridor at a four-hour period, rather than the two-and-a-half-hour period. I'm going to take you back. One thing I wanted to also point out with this slide, the white arrows basically mean that there's not a significant change in the traffic. So that really gets back to the redistribution of traffic. However, you will see the orange arrow between the Capitol Beltway and 7. That will show you that we actually are attracting traffic along that segment of 66 in the mornings. Conversely, in the evenings, you'll see a similar situation as you do in the AM. However, we're losing traffic along Route 123, and we're losing traffic along the same section that's gaining traffic in the morning for the PM direction. Another tool that we did as part of this project, and really, this was a tool geared at the jurisdictions, so they could understand the improvements that might have to come along with us implementing this project, is we looked at the level of service at intersections as people use this corridor. And in the morning, you'll see the red dots displayed that we have some intersections that, as a result of this project, experienced a degraded condition. That will be a tool for us, so we can look at optimizing the signal timing on those, as well as adjusting that time in order to reduce the delay at those intersections. You'll also see on this slide, and I know the dots are a little small, the green dots are actually intersections that we're improving the existing conditions because of the rebalancing of traffic and more people being attracted to the interstate and not the arterials. And you can see a lot of that actually along Route 50. In the PM peak, we actually do not experience a degraded condition or a change in conditions that would make us degraded. In fact, you'll see where we have a minor or no change in many locations, and then you'll see some of the green dots along 29 and, again, along Route 123, that we're actually improving the operations of those intersections. And again, these are tools that we're using to help the jurisdictions understand how traffic is moving and using the corridor. These are the upcoming project milestones as we continue forward with this project. Today, we're at the last of our three Design Public Hearings that were postponed, actually, because of the blizzards. And we are also working with the Northern Virginia Transportation Commission on their Call for Projects. And I'm going to get into some detail on that in the next couple of slides. The tolling construction is expected to start this summer. We plan to award that contract sometime in June, and we expect the tolling to begin in the summer of 2017. So I want to talk to you a little bit about the net toll revenue and how that will be used. As I mentioned earlier, the Northern Virginia Transportation Commission will be delegating that and administering that money to the jurisdictions to spend on multimodal projects in the region. Currently, if you go to their website, they have a Call for Projects right now, where the jurisdictions can fill out an application to put in a project that would be eligible for funding through this project. And what they're doing right now, we have allocated through our coordination with the Commonwealth Transportation Board in advance of $5 million, so they can apply that to multimodal program now and get that online when we start our toll in 2017. These toll -- these multimodal projects are expected to be implemented within five years, and the Northern Virginia Transportation Commission will be expected to report back to the Commonwealth Transportation Board on their effectiveness of moving more people through the corridor. And again, what does that mean? That's enhanced bus service. We can have increased frequency of buses, which essentially is reducing the headways. We can incentivize carpools and do things to get people in carpools and vanpools. We have the ability to contribute to metro, do roadway improvements. I talked to you about some signal optimization, perhaps some roadway improvements to move more people, as well as park-and-ride lots, getting people to a place where they can combine their trips to move along the corridor. This outlines the Northern Virginia Transportation Commission's initial or multimodal program milestones. And again, the Call for Projects is currently active. How that will work is that will close out on March 24th. Northern Virginia Transportation Commission on their website will have project sheets available, so you can review what projects were nominated by the region for this toll revenue. They will themselves have an open process, where in May, they will have a public hearing before their commission to review those projects with the public. And that evening, the commission will move on an action of what projects will be selected for the initial $5 million investment from the Commonwealth. What the VDOT will do with that is that we will take that program in front of the Commonwealth Transportation Board in June and have them authorize the expenditure of those funds on those projects. And again, the target for implementation of these projects will be when we start toll day one in the summer of 2017. Lastly, I just wanted to touch upon the eastbound widening project. Like I mentioned, the department's pursuing this as a separate project, although it's under the Transform 66 umbrella. And what we're doing with this project is initiating an environmental study. It's an environmental assessment for that project. An environmental assessment will -- we will look at impacts to the area through noise analysis, air analysis. But largely, this construction will be within our VDOT's right-of-way on 66 Inside the Beltway. There will be some areas that we will look at for sound walls along there. There are some sound walls along that corridor that need some attention, and we do recognize that. This will be an opportunity to replace those with the sound walls, similar to what you see as part of the Spot 2 improvements. Since we're just kicking off that study, we anticipate that we will come out in May to the public to talk about the widening project and give some more details on our study and how we're going to move forward with that project. We expect to have that wrapped up by the end of next year and award that to a contract by early 2018, and have the new lane between the Dulles Connector Road and Boston Exit 71 open by early 2020. And with that, I'm going to close out the presentation. And before we start the comment period, I just want to remind some of you that may have walked in late, make sure you've signed up to speak. Again, and we will be up here. Our project team is going to come up here and listen to your public comment. I also wanted to recognize Supervisor Kathy Smith. We had a representative here, but I want to recognize Kathy Smith, and she's with Fairfax County Board of Supervisors. Thank you. So the first speaker is Charles McAndrew.
Thank you very much for having the public hearing. I appreciate it. I just have two questions for you. How can we, the taxpayers, be assured that the toll revenue that will be used only on -- would be used only on I-66? Couldn't they divert the toll revenues for bike trails or Metro Rail or something like that? That's my first question. The second one is, why only toll eastbound traffic instead of including westbound? The reason I ask that question is that you have -- are you going to have a lot of people coming from Chantilly and Centerville in on 66 and places even further west? And they're going to be told, you know, during that rush hour period on the inside of 66. But you're going to have people coming out from DC that are maybe working in Arlington or working in the area of the Beltway and I-66, and they're not going to be told. So I don't think that's very fair. That's my two questions. Thank you for listening.
Our next speaker tonight is Fran Taylor.
Good evening. Thank you for taking all the questions. I'd like to address the issue of requiring an EZ Pass during the toll periods. All the other toll roads in the area where EZ Pass is used, there are alternative ways of paying for people who don't have an EZ Pass, like I-495, you don't have to use the toll lanes. On the Dulles Toll Road, you don't -- you can go through the cash-only booths, et cetera. But then, within -- and even outside, you know, for the planned outside the Beltway for I-66, there's alternatives. You don't have to use the new lanes. But inside the Beltway, there's no alternative. And what that means is that no casual users are going to be able to use that road during the toll periods. And you said earlier, you're going to be reading the registrations anyway, so the technology exists to capture the tags. And there are all sorts of -- I mean, the technology supports all sorts of ways of paying, like going online, going on the phone to do it. I've been at other jurisdictions where you get till 8 o'clock the next day to pay a toll, and you just go online, or you go into the -- at the gas stations, there's a little thing where you can do it. And so, I don't -- it doesn't seem right that -- what about people, say, who are going back to the airport, who are out-of-towners, they're not going to be able to use the road at all? So, and, you know, maybe in future, the toll hours will change, and that will become increasingly burdensome. Anyway, let's make one of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ginger Harrison.
Hello. I apologize for coming in late, but I was on 495 under 35 mile-per-hour speed limits, so I couldn't really get here very quickly. I guess I'm a little confused by the format. Are we not going to get answers this evening to any of our questions or be able to generate comments?
So our format this evening is a comment period, and then we're going to use the remainder of the time after the comment period to address with our technical staff any specific comments.
Okay, so we will get some answers to our questions this evening. Okay, well, that's helpful. Thank you. So I guess from a format standpoint, my husband and I tried to make these presentations several times during the blizzards. I'll express a little frustration, because I don't -- we, you know, religiously checked the website. We didn't see updates to the rescheduling. Obviously, I know weather is a problem, but where there are only three scheduled presentations, that was confusing. But my main issue is I live pretty much at the intersection of Washington Boulevard and 29, and I heard you talk a lot about things like degraded situations and arterial lines. And I think sometimes the general public might not quite understand that, so you might improve your communications by speaking real language that your citizens might understand. And then, also, what if this doesn't work? What if you're a homeowner -- I'm a resident of Arlington. We own a home. What if there's a spillover at Washington Boulevard and 29, which happens all the time now for people avoiding 66? And what if I actually can't get out of my neighborhood because I'm at that cross-section? How are you going to control for that neighborhood traffic? And I really hope the answer isn't that we have to wait until a contract expires in 2050, or 2020, or whatever the year might be, or sell our property and leave town. So I hope you've considered controlling for spillover traffic, because at least in the very beginning, people aren't going to understand this, and there are already backups. I've also heard some rumors, and I'm not sure if they're true, about Shires are taking Lee Highway or 29 down to one lane in some areas. Again, I don't know if that's true or not, but I just -- I think the communications on what do we do in our neighborhood, I think this is going to make it worse. 35 miles an hour on 495 here doesn't work. So if you're going -- I wish you'd expand a little bit more on 45 mile-an-hour speed limits. Is that what we're looking at? And I also want to know if any member of your team actually lives in the areas that you're proposing these changes for. Have any of you actually done this commute? Or have you actually only performed statistical modeling and used urban planning legalese to propose changes that the rest of us are actually going to have to live with?
Our next speaker is Robert Baer.
Well, thank you for allowing us to speak this time around. A few questions. Again, I've been to several of these. I recognize a few faces. I still have yet, between the website, your speeches, to hear anything about increasing the metro and bus stop sizes. I mean, just the environmental impact alone on that. Try parking in Vienna at any time of the day, especially in the morning, and try to jump on metro. So now, if you're looking at taking tens of thousands of people off 66 and expecting them to ride the bus, which is, according to this, the goal, where are those people going to park? There's not a lot of room at Vienna to begin with. There's no mention of Metro Rail service. There's no mention of extra bus service. Where's that money coming from? That's one question. Where is the money going to, especially since profit's not expected to be made for years? $60 million cost and expecting to make $12 to $13 million a year, that's a long-term investment for someone fixing to make a lot of money. How or who is paying for those roads to be fixed outside of us and more of our taxes, on top of being taxed to ride on what's already our road? My last question, and nothing seems to answer anything, is I'm with the lady that spoke before me. It's obvious that no one who ever made this plan up has ever driven east to DC in the morning. Try jumping off onto 50, 29, anything, and it's already traffic. I mean, it's not as bad as 66, but it's still pretty bad. So now, you're going to take tens of thousands of people off of 66 because that's your goal. And then, you're going to put them on 50, 29. And these people that live on those roads and on those houses, in those areas, you'll never get out of your -- I mean, the way -- as brutal as people are, they're not going to let you cut out. You know, so nothing seems to -- it is changing your paperwork that says that there is no more impact on those roads, because that was the very first thing that I questioned at your very first meeting. The note that said side roads would not be impacted by this. Like I said, it's obvious that no one who ever wrote this up has ever driven that. So there's still no address -- there's still no wording on what will happen with those side roads. Because once you do this, then you automatically have to increase 50. You automatically have to increase 29. So who's paying for that? You know, you've -- I'm glad that we've already -- we've moved on and started talking about widening 66. Bottom line, though, is once you get inside the Beltway, you're bottlenecked no matter what, no matter if you're paying for it or what. I mean, all you're doing is pushing all of those people into small areas inside of the Beltway, trying to get to DC. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is David Ross.
Good evening. Thank you for hosting me. This is my first public speech anywhere ever. Thanks you all for being here. But I came in a little bit late, but I do have But I came in a little bit late, but I do have some questions about the noise impact of this particular project and whether a categorical exclusion from the NEPA laws would be appropriate. If the intent is to move more people, that would mean more vehicles, more noise. And I'm wondering if there's been an update to the 2008 noise impact study that was done for the spot improvements to I-66 that were just completed. And I have a couple of comments on the methodology for that noise impact study that I think undercounted some of the people that are heavily affected by the noise every day. In particular, sound barrier number three would have stood between Mount Daniel Elementary School and High Point Pool, both of which are facilities that are not residences, which means they were largely discounted during that study. But there are almost 1,000 people who are in those facilities every day, every year, every day of the year, subjected to noise impacts that were measured under that study in excess of 67 decibels that are projected to be up to 69 after the spot improvements are complete. So either under this particular project of dynamic tolling, or, as you mentioned in your last slide, in the expansion of I-66 to add more lanes, I just request that a very close analysis of the noise be done to include something beyond just the residences that may or may not be within close reach of the sound walls. There are other people in those areas that may otherwise not be counted. Thank you.
Our next speaker tonight is Robert Whitfield.
I'm Rob Whitfield with the Fairfax County Taxpayers Alliance, and this project has evolved over the last six months. The governor unilaterally made a change in November by announcing that he would not have tolls on what I call reverse commuters, which is westbound from Arlington, DC in the morning and eastbound into Arlington, DC in the evening. Yet, the traffic congestion caused, especially in the evening, is severe. And so the idea is that it appears that the present plan would have a huge financial impact on people who live outside the Beltway but work inside the Beltway. Yet, you do nothing to discourage single-occupant vehicles for the reverse commuters. Arlington County basically got a free ride on the Silverline construction, which is costing about $6 billion with about $3 billion of that from the Dulles Toll Road users. So basically, what we have is a very unfair financial plan. In fact, I would call it discriminatory. So that's one problem. Second problem is that the organization being used to manage the surplus toll revenues, Northern Virginia Transportation Commission, has existed for 50 years and has never favored highways. And in fact, the website of NVTC is novatransit.org. It is entirely unfit to manage highway toll revenues, and therefore, it would be far more appropriate to give the Northern Virginia Transportation Authority, which includes jurisdictions such as Prince William County, Manassas City, Manassas Park, who have no representation on the NVTC. That's another major problem. Nobody's even attempted to resolve that. The third problem is the conversion to HOV2 to HOV3 in about 2020. We've never seen any reports providing factual data as to the potential air quality benefits to such a conversion. So we do need to see that within the next 60 days. We also need to see what alternatives, if any, were considered in the regional air quality plan. Because I was told by somebody earlier this week, and in fact, it's just what US EPA wants. Well, to hell with EPA, okay? We live in this place. The air quality has been improving, thank goodness, over the last 25, 30 years. And so we need to see that these proposals are based on some rational, economically feasible plan. There's so much wrong else to go into, but we don't yet have many of the facts because the traffic and revenue studies are being updated at the moment. So I will hope to come back as a future proceeding and get more information from you all. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to invite Jeff Parnes.
Thank you. My name is Jeff Parnes. I'm speaking as an individual. I was disappointed to hear you say that people who do not have transponders will be treated as violators. They should be treated as paying guests. State of Virginia has an interstate, just barely an interstate, between the district and Virginia. It's on everybody's highway maps. It's on everybody's GPS systems. People will drive on I-66 without knowledge for this if they're out of state, rental car users, people trying to go to Dulles Airport or anywhere else. We need to encourage them to use it and pay a surcharge as they do on I-495, on I-395, on I-95. But when you say they're violators, Virginia's not for lovers. It's for people who are being charged and accused of being violators. That's a bad philosophy for the state of Virginia. Number two, the item that I heard before is that we wanted to encourage people to use hot lane to hot lane to hot lane to make an easy and thorough transfer. I understand if you're coming down I-495 from the state of Maryland and get in the hot lanes now, you will not be able to get in the hot lanes to Interstate 66 inside the Beltway. That seems to me a bad solution to a problem. Because most people will say, well, if I get in the hot lanes now, I should be able to continue on the hot lanes. And I've been told that you have to stay not on those hot lanes to get on to the 66 extension, Dulles Toll Road extension. So that's counterlogical. If I see a sign that says hot lanes, I'm going to assume that that hot lanes will bring me to all hot lanes. Otherwise, you're going to have to pull the sign that says, if you want to stay in the hot lanes for this one instance, you're going to have to get off and go someplace else. Not a good idea. You need to have hot lanes being a through route. And I'm looking forward to the second phase of this, which tells us how the widening will occur, because that has to happen as soon as possible. I understand that it's going to happen in two or three years. I came tonight expecting to hear information about that. I was disappointed in not hearing that information. That information needs to be provided to us so that we can understand what's happening here. And as the previous speaker spoke, we need to know what percentage of the HOV2 people you do not expect to convert to HOV3, and therefore, those are the people who'll be on Washington Boulevard and all the secondary roads that they can't, because they don't pay a toll now, and they'll probably be using it, and then when they're be stuck with a toll, which will be more expensive in three or four years, will bail out. We need to know what percentage of those people are and how that will affect the other people. Thank you, Jeff Parnes.
That is the last speaker I have on my list this evening. If there's anyone else that I would like to invite up to speak now. Otherwise, we have an hour or 45 minutes left to meet with our technical team to address some of the comments that we've heard tonight.
Just one question. This is a comment. Apparently, this highway is eligible for federal funding, but there's no federal funding on it. My question is, why not? Everybody else is going to the pile, and apparently, they passed all kinds of highway bills the last time around. We could probably use a few dollars, too.
Can you straighten your knee?
Oh, yeah.
My name's William Senate. I'm just a citizen that has to take the road every day. My name's on the list. Thanks.
Thank you. We're going to open up the doors. I invite everyone out, back out into the hallway. I've heard a few things tonight with the environmental, the traffic, the tolling operations. We have the technical team that has prepared all of that, so please go out in the hallway, and I'll also be available well if you have any questions. Thank you.
At what point will some of the questions be answered?
Sure. Sure. The question is, for those that are watching live stream this evening, the question is, at what point will the comments be addressed? The comments are due back by March 24th for this design public hearing, and we would expect to address those comments by the end of April.
Okay, so you're not going to have some response tonight?
We're not going to have a comment-response dialogue tonight. The format's been for our design public hearings is that afterwards, we would spend time with the technical team to get a little bit more detailed and specific, since we have plans tonight and some more detailed drawings.
And then you'll publish?
And then we will publish this. And we'll also publish all the materials. And I would like to point out, if you haven't already, we have our categorical exclusion available to you online, an air quality analysis along with that. We have a traffic technical report available online, and we also have a full set of plans so you can see the actual physical construction of the system available to you online.
Transform 66.
Yeah, it's transform66.org. With that, I'll take the comments up here. I just wanted to close out this piece of it. All right. Thank you very much.